Okay. Right. Good evening and welcome to the July 11th, 2022 City Council Roundtable. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's roundtable is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. City Clerk, who is virtual, will be taking the roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. Mayor Catherine Ross?
Here.
Councilmember Ethan Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Kara Christensen?
Here.
Councilmember Brian Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Johnson?
Here.
Councilmembers Matt Lissay?
Here.
Councilmember Jim Mayhew?
Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew currently isn't present. Was he planning to attend?
If maybe, best I can say. He has a repairman at his house. So it depends on how fast the repairs happen.
Okay.
So it just to cover though, I move to excuse.
Second.
Council, if I may, there's one more council member that's absent this evening, I believe. Councilmember Robert Watten.
Correct. We also need a move to excuse.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have two motions to excuse Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew. That was motioned by.
Point of order.
Yes.
We can actually do that, have two motions on the floor at the same time.
Let's do the, can, I move, I move to amend my original motion to include Councilmember Watten.
There you go.
As being excused.
Second.
Okay, so we motioned and amended by Councilmember Holloway and second by Councilmember Johnson to excuse Councilmember Watten and Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew.
A point of order.
Point?
What happens if Jim or Councilmember Mayhew shows up?
Then we will show the time that he arrived.
Okay. It doesn't, it doesn't exclude him from the meeting in any way.
That is correct. Any discussion? Councilmember Lissay?
Having a discussion. It's not a point of order, that is discussion, but that was the same question I was going to bring up, so I wanted to do it in the proper, proper sequences is that if, if they show up, then we'll excuse them. But I also want to point out that this is for the roundtable, not for the council meeting.
That is correct. So can someone in the audience please make sure the doors are unlocked? They were locked. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? All those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes unanimously and Councilmember Watten and Mayor Pro Tim, our absence is excused. Thank you, City Clerk. Okay, as a reminder, members must seek recognition from the chair before speaking and be sure to raise your hand. And now we move on to our first item of special business, which is to approve the agenda. Councilmember, have a motion to approve the roundtable agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So it was moved by Councilmember Christensen and second by Councilmember Holloway. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor to approve the agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. Right, motion passes unanimously to approve the agenda. So the first item of discussion this evening is Agenda Bill 22-098, Mill Site Plan Commercial Industrial Plan Quasi Judicial Land Use Matter. The applicant, Snowquomi Mill Ventures, is seeking approval of a planned commercial industrial plan. This agenda item provides an introductory, the presentation of the PCI plan application and accompanying environmental impact statement and proposes a recommended schedule for the city council meetings for consideration. Before staff begins the introductory presentation, I will turn the matter over to City Attorney Sturbank, who will address the legal parameters pertaining to the quasi judicial land use matters, including the appearance of fairness doctrine. City Attorney Sturbank?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Council and for those watching at home. As the mayor indicated, I'm going to talk briefly about the legal parameters that apply to this particular kind of proceeding, both those relating to closed record proceedings and the appearance of fairness. So first of all, briefly, what does it mean when we say this is a quasi judicial proceeding? Washington courts use that term to generally describe administrative proceedings that are more like those that appear, that occur in court than they are in the legislature or when the council acts as a legislative body. And in the context of your council meetings, a proceeding is determined to be quasi judicial if it involves a situation where you're acting like a judge and applying a defined set of legal criteria to a particular application or a particular set of facts, when the matter involves a particular parcel or group of parcels rather than the entire city or a zoning district. And it also applies when there are defined parties on either side of an issue, like when there is an applicant on one side and opponents on the other, as is the case with the mill site proceeding here. And specifically, your consideration of the planned commercial industrial plan is quasi judicial because, number one, it involves a specific property site, the former Snowquomi Warehouse Mill. You'll be applying a defined set of legal criteria, those that are found in the Snowquomi City Code, applicable to planned commercial industrial plans and planned unit developments. And there are specific parties on both sides. There is the applicant, Snowquomi Mill Ventures, and there are the people and entities who testified in opposition, specifically the Snowquomi Community Action Network. So it is quasi judicial. What does that mean? There are a number of limitations that flow from a status of a matter as quasi judicial. First, they are that it's a closed record proceeding and under your code and state statute, there can be only one open record hearing on a quasi judicial project permit. And an open record proceeding is one where, for instance, any member of the public can testify, people can offer exhibits, documents that are admitted into the record. In this case, the open record hearing was made by the city's hearing examiner. And under your code and state law, then there can also only be one closed record hearing that's follows, and that's this proceeding. And that's where your consideration must be based on the record that was previously made generally with no new evidence admitted. And so for that reason, and for members of the public who may be listening, the council will not be accepting general public comment on the matter either tonight or in subsequent meetings when the mill site quasi judicial matter is called, or during the public comment portion of the regular council meetings. And the mayor has some comments that will be included as part of her general introduction of public comment that will remind people of that. I also mentioned that the appearance of fairness doctrine applies. That's a doctrine that evolved in Washington State through a number of judicial decisions. It's now codified in state statute. It's designed to ensure that a quasi judicial matter is, not only is fair, but that it appears fair. And in general, the statute, which is codified in Chapter 4236 of the Revised Code of Washington, prohibits ex parte or off the record communications between decision makers and either proponents of the matter or opponents. And if such conversations occur, the council needs to place the substance of the communications on the record and make a public announcement of that content and allow the parties of either side an opportunity to rebut the substance of whatever the communication is at the hearing where the action is considered or taken on the matter to which the communication related. So for example, if one of you runs into a constituent at the grocery store and that person begins to advocate a position on either side of the matter or asks you what you think of it, that's an ex parte or off the record conversation. The appearance of fairness doctrine also addresses or encompasses more general concerns about potential bias or partiality. And so I will ask you a series of questions, as I have in other quasi judicial matters, so that any disclosures concerning ex parte communications can be made and to allow the parties an opportunity to rebut. So the first question, and I'll just go down, down the line, and if other council members come while we're underway, I'll ask them those questions as well. The first question is whether you have any financial or ownership interest in the mill site property. I'm just going down, down the line. Councilmember Benson?
I don't.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Councilmember Lissay?
No.
Councilmember Christensen?
I do not.
And Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Thank you. Do you have any connection either to the applicant, Snowquomi Mill Ventures, or its representatives, or to any other party opposed to the action? And specifically, would you have any connection or relationships that would materially affect your ability to impartially decide? So going again down the line, Councilmember Benson?
Is Tom Struf involved in this?
Mr. Struf represents the applicant, Snowquomi Mill Ventures.
He's a friend of mine, but I haven't discussed any of this with him. And I mean, he's not a good enough friend for me to do anything untoward.
So would you say that it has an impact on your ability to impartially decide the matter?
No.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Councilmember Lissay?
No.
Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Do you believe that you stand to gain or lose directly as the result of an approval or disapproval of the project? Councilmember Benson?
No.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Councilmember Lissay?
No.
Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Are you employed by, or do you have any prospective employment with or work for any of the parties to the proceeding? Councilmember Benson?
No.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Councilmember Lissay?
None that I know of.
Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Is there any reason that you believe generally that you cannot judge the matter impartially? Councilmember Benson?
No.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Councilmember Lissay?
No.
Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Have you had any ex parte contacts or communications with either the opponents or proponents of the proposed action? Councilmember Benson?
No.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Councilmember Lissay?
No.
Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Sorta. There, there is an individual who I think has sent us all emails referencing it, and I believe that you are also copied on all those emails. Those do not impact my decision one way or the other.
Can you summarize the substance of those emails?
It would be very challenging to do so. I would say that it's very difficult to understand what that individual is trying to say, nor have I really read them that close. As soon as I see the mention of the mill site, I stop reading.
Emails also gone to the city clerk, do you know?
I don't know. I'm pretty sure that you are CC'd on all of those.
Okay. We can make those available to the extent the applicant or council or anyone would like to see them. They don't, if, well, I'll talk with you offline to make sure that we're thinking of the same emails and we can make further disclosures as needed.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes my questioning for the council, and I will turn it back to you and Mr. Rogers.
Right, thank you, City Attorney, City Attorney Sturbank. Now Jason Rogers will make a presentation and review the schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, you have to remember I got. Sorry. Sorry, I'm too tall for that mic. Jason Rogers, I am the interim community development director here for another week or so, and I wanted to introduce the project to you all. So, oops, I gotta get on this, do this. Let's see if this works. Okay, that's gonna have weird transitions. Okay, so this is the Snowquomi Mill Planned Commercial Industrial Plan. And I'll briefly run through background here. So this is the project site highlighted. You can see other areas of Snowquomi. So here's downtown Snowquomi, here's Snowquomi Ridge up here, and so it is on the other side of the river from the bulk of the city. Just quickly running through background, this is where the mill site, the Snowquomi Mill site fits into the city's conference of plans, so it is in its own planning area, the mill planning area over here. There's a number, there are a number of significant features listed in the conference of plan about this site. I'm not going to read them all. We can, you know, I don't think any of these are a surprise to us at this point. You know, it's got the, the, the mill pond itself, which is not a part of this proposal. A large portion of the site is within the flood plain and the floodway. It's located near the city's public works facility and North Well Field over, across the river. And of course, there are areas of potential site contamination over there. This is the city's zoning map, and so you can see this area in kind of the light purple here is planned commercial industrial is what the zoning is called, and that is broadly speaking, the subject of this proposal. There isn't a better purple, so you can see it. Or excuse me, the previous map was the city's land use plan from the conference of plan. This is the zoning map, and so there's a dark, this deeper purple is the PCI zone. So you can see there, and then part of this, the site is also zoned open space to. Brief planning history, the city's been planning for this site since the early to mid 1990s. It was in the city's original, the Snowquomi Vicinity Conference of Plan in 1994. This went through pre-annexation agreement and pre-annexation zoning in 2011. It was annexed to the city in 2012, and the city adopted an annexation implementation plan in 2016. There was a determination of non-significance, a SEPA determination of non-significance in 2011 for the pre-annexation zoning and the pre-annexation agreement. There is also a SEPA addendum in 2016 for the, the annexation implementation plan. So now we get to the PCI plan itself. This plan was submitted by the applicant in March of 2017, that a city determined to complete a little under a month later in April. This notice of application the city published in, on May 3rd also include what's called a determination of significance. This is a SEPA term that says this project is likely to have some significant adverse impacts on the environment, and so we're going to make you do an EIS. The city held a scoping meeting for that EIS in May of 2017, and then we issued a scoping memorandum summarizing all the comments we got from scoping. So there, we got comments at the meeting, we sent a notice out to get solicit written comments from the public throughout that process, and so then we summarized all that in December of 2017. So then I'll show you, this is the proposed site plan for the PCI plan itself. So this is, this is the updated one that's from earlier this year, the, it does not differ substantially, this graphic does not, from the one submitted in 2017. I know the quality on this is not great because of cup, trying to copy paste it in. I can show you a better one a little bit later. Broadly speaking, we have the site divided into what are called three planning areas. So you have planning area one here on the western portion of the site where all these nice colored, they're supposed to be buildings are. You have planning area two up here in the northeastern portion of the site, and then planning area three, it covers most of the southern portion of the site. For this specific PCI plan application, there is a fairly high level of detail for planning area one, which you can see on this drawing. There's only a conceptual level of, for planning areas two and three, which is to say, we know approximately the square footage of the buildings being proposed, but they don't have any buildings designed, they haven't done footprints or anything like that. So there's a lot of detail that would have to come at a later stage. But for planning area one, you can see we have this relatively high level of detail as to where the buildings would be placed, what the utility systems would be and things like that. This table here summarizes the building square footage for each of the planning areas. And so you can see planning area one has in total just over 604,000 square feet of buildings proposed, including 134,000 square feet of residential, 70,000 of retail and restaurant, 120,000 square feet of light industrial, and 280,000 square feet of warehouse manufacturing space. So you can see in total, that gets you to about 11 acres of gross building footprint. 69 acres of open space would be part of planning area one, and then roads and other impervious surfaces would be 22 acres, so that's things like parking. And then the total area at the bottom, which you may not be able to see because of the transcript there, but it's 102 acres. So you can see the percentages get broken down there as to how much of the site is going, is proposed to be covered in planning area one. And then, of course, we have the square footages for planning areas two and three. Again, not, not a higher level of detail, but you can see how much of the site is proposed to be covered with, you know, again, the building footprint area, the open space, the end of the other impervious surfaces. So the total lifetime development of this would be just over 1.8 million square feet. This would be proposed over a 10 to 15 year build out period. So once they get going on this project, assuming the city council approves it, of course, it, it would take, you know, out until, you know, past 2030 to complete it. There's a bit of a zoom in on planning area one alone, so, you know, with the unfortunately low detail of this, you can see it a little bit better as to how things are arranged. So in general, you have, this is Mill Pond Road that comes along the river here. They would build a roundabout here for the main entrance and then have a, a main street down the middle with buildings on either side, parking would be down here, and then the warehouse manufacturing buildings would be here to the north. There would be two secondary entrances off the, the hall road, the, the private hall road today, so there's this one here, the northwest corner, and then another one here in the northeast corner that would come into the back of the site. But this would be the main entrance through the roundabout. Briefly summarizing the SEPA process for this project, you've heard me talk about the determination of significance. The city and the applicant spent quite a bit of time developing a draft environmental impact, environmental impact statement that was released in April of 2020 with originally a 45 day comment period, which was extended to a total of 74 days to allow more time for people to provide comments on the draft environmental impact statement. We then, the city and the applicant then took all those comments, we revised the final, or we revised the EIS, provided response to all the comments we got, and then published the final EIS in December of 2021. That EIS was then appealed, or specifically the adequacy of that EIS was appealed by a group called the Snowquomi Community Action Network. And they appealed it within the, the appeal window in December of 2021. We scheduled this project for a public hearing, in this case with the hearing examiner. The hearing examiner did two things. She, she conducted the public hearing on this, on the PCI plan. That was a one day event in late March, and then the hearing examiner heard the SEPA appeal in April, and that took, and that was an entire week of, you know, five full days of testimony and looking at exhibits and, and argument. The hearing examiner took everything under advisement and then issued her decision on the EIS appeal and her recommendation to the city council on the PCI plan in June, and that gets us to here. So the hearing examiner affirmed the adequacy of the EIS and recommended the city council approve the PCI plan with a long list of conditions. So briefly looking at, you know, how, how do we, how does the council review this? What codes are you looking at? So we have this specific section of the code, 17.20.050. This is the planned commercial industrial provisions. It has the purpose of the PCI zoning district is in subsection A. There's a, a long list of decision criteria in subsection, more subsections. Another thing to be mindful of is there's application requirements in subsection I. This references the planned unit development criteria, the city's planned unit development criteria, which is in chapter 17.50 of the city's code. Also in subsection I importantly is an allowance for what are called deviations. These are deviations from the city's normal codes. There are standards to apply when, for the deviation, so it's not just an automatic grant. But these are very important. The city has essentially allowed provisions for other types of projects in the past. Both Snowquomi Ridge one and two are good examples of this. There are multiple deviations from what would be the city's generally applicable zoning code that apply in Snowquomi Ridges one and two. We use these deviations to try to achieve, if you will, better outcomes in design and development of these large properties. That's why they're, they apply to these larger developments like under the planned commercial industrial plan, under the mixed use final planning process, and we don't necessarily allow them for smaller scale development because deviations wouldn't necessarily be appropriate in those cases. In this case, there are, the applicant has asked for multiple deviations. There's multiple deviations for road standards, one for street lighting, one for second story dwelling units, a couple for allowed uses, one for increased height limits for at least a couple of the buildings, and then a deviation for wetland buffers. And we'll get in, and we can talk through all these deviations and the reasons behind the request as we move through this process. City staff recommended, and the hearing examiner then adopted a long list of recommended conditions. So we have early on in the conditions, and, and these are in the hearing examiner's recommendation and decision document you can find. They're also in the, the city staff, staff, staff report, which went to the hearing examiner back in March. So you have conditions related to what we call substantial conformance of future permit applications. So one condition we want to ensure is that if the council approves this PCI plan, that all the future applications, clearing, grading permits, building permits, whatever other permits are needed, are going to be, you know, as the term here is, in substantial conformance with this PCI plan. They can't go decide, no, we're going to build this different kind of building over here instead. So there's a process laid out in these conditions to look at that. We have a condition about design guidelines. One thing this project is going to need, we don't have, we haven't drilled down to that high level of detail at this time, are what are the exact design guidelines that are going to apply here? What's, what are the buildings actually going to look like? Right now, we have these colored boxes on a piece of paper. That's great for some things, but it does, but as they physically build buildings, what are they going to look like? So that's something we're going to work through. There are wetland mitigation and monitoring. Because of the extensive number of wetlands on the site and because of the plan that the applicant has proposed for addressing these wetlands and their buffers and restoring them frankly from their very degraded condition, there's a specific condition there about, we need to monitor, you know, they need to do mitigation and they need to monitor everything they're doing over a period of multiple years. Then we get into what we call SEPA related conditions. These are ones that are coming more or less straight out of the environmental impact statement, things they need to do related to, in this case, all the different parts of the environment. So earth, air quality, water resources, meaning wetlands and streams, plants and animals, you know, and on down the list. So there's a very extensive, you can see in fact there, let me go back here. So it starts at condition 12 and ends at condition 50. So there's a very long list of conditions that came with the EIS. So that concludes my brief overview. I'm happy to take questions, but also, of course, I'm happy to talk about schedule. There's a schedule that was attached to the agenda bill. This is, schedule is, it's got a lot of meetings on it, I'll be honest, and it's going to take us through September, but we're happy to take feedback on the, on the schedule from the council. We're hoping the council would take, you know, formally adopt it similar to what you've done for the budget calendar. Now, I recognize we may have a slight issue that we didn't notice action in the roundtable, so we, we may have to tweak that and get you to.
Dirk, it's, it's part of the agenda.
Okay. I'll defer to the city attorney on that. And then similar to what several of you were, the council members were here when we discussed the Salish Expansion Project back in 2018, you may recall what we as staff tried to do is come up with what we call an issue matrix. So we would take all your questions, summarize them, put them in a matrix, and just start working through them at future meetings. And so, you know, whether it's about parking, whether it's about building heights, whether it's about wetlands, we're going to take it all down and, and, and it gives us as staff the opportunity to read it, consider it, respond to it, not try to do it on the fly here in front of you at the podium. And I, and that worked fairly well last time, we're hoping to do that again. So we'll be asking the council, you know, certainly not right now, but, you know, once you had a chance to dig into all the documents for this, to start, start asking, you know, throwing questions our way, because we're certainly, we're here to help, we're here to answer the questions you have. The other thing I want to address, let me switch my share here one sec, is the record for this project. So there was a link in the agenda bill, and it takes you to this. And this is the entire record for this project. So this is the record developed by the hearing examiner. You heard the city attorney talk about the open record hearing, and now this is a, this is now a closed record proceeding. The hearing examiner went through all those, the, the public hearing and took in all these documents. So, so in the, this folder, you have all the, you know, here's the PCI, some of the requirements table, here's their updated PCI plan application, the, and various other documents that were admitted into the record. We then have for the SEPA, those are, those documents are also part of the record. So we have all the appellants, this is scans, appeal exhibits are in here. We have the applicants, we have the cities, and then we have what are called record documents. The record documents are largely, you know, briefings, motions. The record documents are largely, you know, briefings, motions that the hearing examiner has decided these are part of the record. So they're available to the council as well. We can answer questions within the record. If something's not in the record, it's, we can't really answer, we're going to say, there's nothing in the record about that or nobody submitted information. Some of this, of course, is because of the hearing examiner proceeding where the hearing examiner is trying to keep things very focused on what's in front of her. And sometimes just because we, you know, there's just no information there. So this is an awful lot of information to read through and I don't, we don't expect you, the council, to read every single document because there's, I don't even know how many inches of paper it would be if we printed it out. But this is all here. You can look through it at your leisure. And I'm sure you're going to have questions as they come up. So that is, that concludes my presentation. So I'm happy to take some questions or, or turn it back to the mayor for now.
Counselor DeSey.
Yeah. I'd encourage counsel to, to, to scan the documents because they are all relevant to the process. So you've got some midnight reading going in for any, anyway. My question really is about, is about process of asking questions. And I don't know if this is a question for the city attorney or for you, Jason, so either one can, can respond. Some of us have been through this process before in a couple of developments. What is the process when you do have a question in terms of asking that question? And who should it go to? And in, in what, what sort of format?
Well, so I can, I can handle that one. I think in general, the, you can ask questions in a couple of ways. You can certainly ask us questions now and I'll sit here and scribble them down and probably listen to the tape later to get that. Emailing us questions is also very helpful because you, you know, you may have some, a chance to consider how you want to ask it or some more details. You want to email directly to myself and CC, you know, the mayor, the city attorney, the city clerk, so that we all, we all have that. But of course, we're trying to avoid any issues with council members discussing amongst themselves. So it's best to send them straight to staff. And we'll get them on that issue matrix that I mentioned.
And not follow, not, not copy all council members, send it, and you guys will disseminate it out to.
Correct. We will publish the issue matrix as, as we have it prior to every meeting. So you can, all of you will be able to see all the questions that have come in. And, and some of you may have similar questions. So we'll consolidate things where appropriate. You know, we'll say, you know, Councilor DeSey asked this, Councilor Hallway asked a similar question, kind of thing.
Right.
So we'll.
Counselor Hallway.
Will those, sorry. Hold on, question though to his, will those emails then become part of the public record?
They, they would be, and for that reason, it's probably easier if the questions are asked during the meeting. Everyone can hear them, Jason can take them down and we can respond either as we have the information or put it on the issue matrix and answer it the next time around. But if you have questions in advance, then yeah, we would include that in the, be part of the record of the council's consideration. Just a written version of a question that you might have otherwise asked during a meeting.
Okay, I just want, I at least wanted to see the questions that were asked.
Yes.
Okay, in their original form.
So there's a lot of pages here. So is there a way to take maybe sections that they can review instead of saying, oh, you know, read what you can, and then some have read it and some haven't read that particular section?
I would, so my recommendation would be of course to focus on the PCI plan application materials themselves. And so those are the files that are going to be in the, for this backup. Those are all these file, files here in the, in the base folder. The, you know, all the other documents, you can get very deep into the weeds of the CIPA appeal documents. But at the end of the day, the hearing examiner determined the EIS to be adequate. And so some of the very nitty gritty drilling down into those details may not be as useful for you to spend your time on. I'm not saying don't do it because certainly you may have questions about the site contamination. And there's an awful lot of information in there in the various exhibits, but from the appellant, from the applicant, from the city about site contamination and the investigations that were done. And that's just one example. So, but to focus your time, you don't, I, I would focus on the PCI plan because that's ultimately what you, you, the council are deciding is, is the PCI plan application. Within that, I think you're also going to have a lot of questions about the deviations because it is a somewhat unusual thing for the council to consider is deviations from the code. So that's one area to focus. There may be a lot of questions about the utilities that are envisioned for the site. I know there've been some discussions as part of the CIP discussions. You have a high, a somewhat higher level of detail about, well, what utilities are intended for the, for the Snoqualmie Mill project now. The wetlands are another one. So as we work through this, once, once we get, I, I think what we're going to do at the next meeting is dive in a little deeper and start showing more, you know, here, here's the planning area one plan and here's where things are going so that the council can get a little better oriented. You know, right now we're trying to keep it very high level to give you, here's the, the project as a whole, but we'll start focusing in on specific subjects in the coming meetings and be responsive to the questions the council has already raised.
So when I look at that list, where should they start? Where, where's PCI?
Exhibit one B.
Okay.
Updates Snoqualmie Mill PCI Plan Application. This has, that is the, the current application and it's many, many, many pages. Where is? I'm going to get a new share on Zoom here.
Jason, can I jump in for a second? To answer your question, Mayor, I think probably the best place to start in conjunction with the PCI plan is to read the portion of the hearing examiner's decision that relates to the PCI plan and contains her findings and recommendations on that. That gives you, it's a recommendation, but it gives you factual findings. It points to documents in the record that support those and gives an explanation for how in the examiner's view, the application meets the criteria, which is the, the task that's before you to do the same. And you have the examiner's decision to serve as a roadmap there. In conjunction with that, the EIS, now that it's been determined to be adequate, is an environmental information document to assist the council in considering potential impacts of the project. Her decision talks about those issues, the major environmental issues in some detail. So you can read that as well. And then there's the draft, much lengthier documents, the draft environmental impact statement and, and the final. So I, I would, and those in themselves are a fair chunk of reading. I would start with those. It would be my recommendation. But probably at the top, the application and the examiner's decision, I think we'll probably will give you a, a helpful mental map for how to approach this and may start you on your own, kind of with questions or areas that you want to focus on that, that you can then let Jason and I know at the, the next meeting or separately. And we can start putting the matrix together to answer questions.
Counselor Johnson.
I think just, I could benefit from some guidance on the scope of what it is that we are specifically responsible for considering in the PCI plan. Are we relitigating things that were heard by the hearing examiner? You know, if I have a concern about some environmental thing, fish or whatever, are we considering those things as well? Or has the hearing examiner pretty much covered the EIS? We're not worried about environmental things at this point? Or, yeah. But essentially, what's, what's the scope of what we are doing here on the council with the PCI plan?
So the council is determining whether the application complies with the criteria. And so those things are addressed in the examiner's decision. But the examiner's decision on that point is a recommendation to you. And so your job will be to decide, do you agree? Do you disagree? Do you have a different conclusion about how some part of the code applies to the application? What you're not relitigating or re-deciding is whether the EIS is good enough. You can, it is legally adequate. And so whether it's thorough enough or long enough or has enough detail in certain places, the examiner decided that it meets the legal standard and it, and it's adequate for your use. There are certain areas of the PCI criteria that take you into some environmental considerations. And then you can, then use the EIS and the documents and its analyses to help you answer those questions. Does, does that help you? Yeah, okay.
I will probably have similar questions down the road.
So can we look at that screen again and show where, where's the, the findings? And you already showed where exhibit one B is.
So, hold on, I'm going to open the, I'm going to open the here examiner's decision. So one second, I will. Okay, so this is the hearing examiner's findings, conclusions and decisions. And so she starts with a love, with a nice summary at the beginning of her decision and then a summary of the record, all those things that we talked about. And I'm going to skip over a bunch of things here. So this is where the findings themselves start. And this is what the city attorney was talking about is, these are the factual findings, these are that she worked through. Here's the contact, you know, the context of the mill site and the surround, and its surroundings. You know, we can get down further to, you know, here's the PCI plan application, you know, when did they submit it? When did the applicant submit it? What is it requesting? So it, it remains a very good high level summary that you can read without having to dive all the way into the application itself, because this application, if I click back to it, can see at the top, there's 161 pages in this application. And many of them are, are, you can't see it, but these are giant 42 by 30 inch plan sheets. So it's a, an awful lot of information to, to wade through. Whereas this, the, the findings do provide that summer, more, a little more of a summary and it can help point you in the right direction. The, you know, and the hearing examiner's findings will reference, you know, for these finds, we're going to reference in many cases, specific exhibit, specific pages. So it can help point you in the direction of, you know, for this specific finding, look at, she, one B is the application says, look at sheet SP4, PDF page 154. I can go back to that one here. 151. One more, there we go. This is page, this is PDF page 154, sheet SP4. So you can see there's a direct reference that, so you don't have to go hunt, you know, just click through and say, what am I looking at? The hearing examiner has kind of helped you out with that already. You know, and then we can get down further to, you know, here, here's her findings on the CIPA appeal and the app, the appellate CIPA case, which are not, which are probably interesting to the council. Especially getting to Councilmember Johnson's question about, you know, are you relitigating? And, and, and no, you're not, but you can at least see how the, how the CIPA appeal worked and what they, what the hearing examiner was hearing from all parties involved in the CIPA appeal that, that led her to her decision that the EIS was adequate. And she's going to reference specific testimony from, that was given to her in many cases. Which we, you know, and, and the transcripts aren't in, aren't, haven't been uploaded yet. We're working, we're, that's another thing we're working on, partly because they're extremely lengthy and, and in the weeds. You know, here's some findings about critical areas, again, a reference to specific exhibits, exhibit C1, C2. So does that, does that help a little bit?
Jason, can, perhaps you can orient the council to that portion of the hearing examiner decision that takes up the, the PCI plan criteria and, and makes, and walks through the code sections that apply.
Yeah, so let me skip through all the, see the EIS things. All right, so here are the PCI plan finds. These start on page 34 of 79 in the hearing examiner's decision here. And, and the examiner walks through, you know, here's the intent of the PCI plan itself. You know, talks about optimized efficiency of the land, scale, which serves to maintain existing spottable character. These are all things that come straight out of the code. There's some procedural things about, you know, when the application was submitted. Here's what, you know, we mailed things, but getting down into here, this is a listing of, here's the code sections that apply. So you can see the streets, the street standards apply, chapter 12, 15. Here's all the, these are, this is a list of the deviations requested. So this is where they're requesting to deviate from. So the streets sections, the conditional requirement for second story dwelling units in the PCI zone and on and on. And again, that can help orient you to what exactly is being requested? What sections of the code are they requesting to deviate from? There's an off, there's multiple finds about what public comment did we get? And it's important to remember that the public comment is helpful, but as the attorney has stated, the council is applying the code to this application. And while the comments can be helpful in that regard, they are not necessarily a determinative. And if somebody says, I don't like the project, don't approve it. Thank you very much. That, that's a great, like, we want to hear from people, but at the end of the day, does the project conform to code or not? Is the decision you're making. So it's always important to keep those, keep that in mind as we're, as you're reading through the public comments for this as well.
Counselor, Minister Vincent has a question.
Yeah. It sounds like there's a whole bunch of deviations that are asked for. So wouldn't that be pertinent? I mean, some of the, it sounds like some of the code is, the applicant's asking for it to be dispensed with so that they can do other things. So wouldn't the opinions of residents who felt differently about that be pertinent?
They're, they're certainly pertinent. With the, with the deviations, the, you know, the finding references the code, so, you know, a specific section that identifies, yes, you can evasions, but the criteria, or rather to approve a deviation request. And the council gets to decide whether to allow it, the deviation or not. Some of the information to support the deviation request is coming, of course, from the applicant, the applicants, the, the application here has a lengthy discussion of every deviation requested and the reasoning behind those deviation requests. Some of the information to support is also going to come from the EIS in a couple of cases. For example, the wetland buffer deviation requests. And the EIS has to go into some details to why that's okay. And, but then there are public comments that are going to talk about some of the deviations that you're also going to want to look at. So again, you're applying the code and while the public comments are, are, can be helpful in that regard, they're not necessarily the be all and all. They're not, and again, you know, these quasi judicial applications are not popularity contests. They are the council acting as a judge, applying the code to a specific application.
It, it doesn't seem like it would be necessarily the case that because a resident had a problem with the city considering dispensing with a, with a code, that that would make it a popularity contest. It, it seems to be very possible that a resident would have a good point or some insight into that. Does.
Sure, sure. But at the end of it.
Go, go ahead, Jason, then I'll.
You know, absolutely. But at the end of the day, the deviations are also allowed by the code. And so the council.
But they're not guaranteed, right? I mean, it's still, it's still up to the council whether or not the deviation will be granted.
Correct.
Right? So, so the applicant makes a request for a deviation and there, there's opportunity for public comment to disagree with that. That needs to be, that needs to be considered by, by council, doesn't it? Or, or do we have to just accept whatever the hearing examiner decided was reasonable?
Well, the, the hearing examiner made a recommendation on all of these. And so, but it's just that, it's a recommendation of the hearing examiner made findings and conclusions to say, here's why the examiner feels this works. The council can, can disagree specifically on that point. And sorry, I'm scrolling down to.
Counselor, let's say had a comment regarding that as well?
But it's a, it's kind of the, it's on the same line, line of the question. Maybe just stated differently that, what I'm hearing is, is that the council's, council first action really is determined, is to confirm or not confirm, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the application complies with the hearing examiner's, examiner's decision. But within that, the deviations are just that deviations and are subject to council approval outside of any other judgment. I'm trying to get understanding, I'm trying to make sure I understand correctly.
So the deviations are allowed, and I'm going to try to point to the parts of the record, deviations are specifically allowed by the code for a PCI plan, just like they are for a mixed use final plan. And there's evidence in the record that the council, in not this council, but prior councils, approved deviations as part of both Snoqualmie Ridge one and two and the Salish Expansion. There are standards, as Jason indicated, in the code for deciding whether to grant a deviation or not. And to make that decision, the council will need to look at the evidence and the record that was offered in support of it and then make a determination. The council will need to look at the evidence and the record that was offered in support of it and then make a determination. Whether one person, five people, 10 people said, I like it, I don't like it. Is by itself not. Usually the evidence that the council would apply. That's gets to the. Popularity contest aspect. There may be things that are said in the comments that are relevant, that are more evidentiary nature, or that would point the council to evidence in the record. That you would then consider. So it's a. It, it's a bit of a fine point. And certainly. When we get to talking in more detail about legal standards, the, the council does have the opportunity for, to deliberate or to ask questions of, of me in closed session with legal counsel. So. We could certainly talk in more detail about legal standards for deviations.
Councilor Hallaway.
Okay, well. Top level, it is accept or deny the PCI. Correct?
Correct.
In making that decision, I have to decide whether it complies with existing city code.
Correct.
As outlined. Further, because there are deviations requested in the PCI, I need to agree or deny on those deviations.
Correct.
And at that stage.
That's part of your overall decision, approve or not, not approve.
Once I've gone through that sub list, I can then go back and make a determination on the PCI at the higher level. I've, I've made determination that complies with the code. I've made determination of the deviations, yes or no. If everything goes green, I can go to the top and say the PCI complies.
That's a, that's a good summary, I think.
Okay, yeah.
The task before the council.
We're part time here and we're not city people. Not leading us through this kind of thing very efficiently. One, two. Council members will make their own decisions of how deep they get into the code. You should not be advising those in judgment. To partially review the code. Okay, so let's not. Talking anymore. Just you're, you're starting to make me itch. Okay, it, we mayor may not go down deep. We may go deep. We should. Each one makes a judgment of how far they need to go to make the calls. I just stated out. Okay. And if that means we read it all, we have a duty to read it all.
Councilor Vincent.
Just a legal question. If a deviation was approved in a previous. Development. Say up on the ridge. Does that mean that we have to approve it? In this new development?
There are different, different deviations.
So they're not the same, they're not the same ones.
No, no. But I think what the purpose of my comment before was to. Explain, to put it in context, the request for deviation, that it is not an unusual animal. In the world of Snowquomi master plan development approvals.
But apparently it's a point of contention.
It's one of the bases on which certain opponents of the project. Base their opposition. There were many.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
So we have a good starting point for our next time we meet to discuss. Would recommend everyone look at the calendar that was attached, the agenda bill. And it looks like we have a special round table coming up July 25. Part of the council meeting.
Mayor.
Councilor DeSey.
It would be helpful if the city clerk could assist by sending out invitations and. Calendar, calendar advice, just to make sure we get it all on our calendars.
Right. And it's kind of. Co- coordinates and correlates with the budget calendar as well. So. Both of it's really important that we keep, keep on track. On both of those. So anyway, so we only have, we have seven minutes before we need to kick off the council meeting. So. Are we ready to? Any other questions or should we go ahead and adjourn, take seven minute break and come back? Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
It is motion by Councilor Vincent, second by Councilor Hallaway to adjourn. All those approved. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Seeing none, motion passes and we will be back at 7:00 PM. Thank you.